I'd like to call the December meeting of the Lafayette City Council to order. Please rise from Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With the court, please call the roll.
Heidi, Clinker?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Allers Meyer?
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Meyer?
Here.
Coram present.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Mr. Campbell.
Mr. President, I move the minutes be approved of the November 3 meeting as communicated.
Mr. Reynolds?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the minutes for November 3, 2014? Corrections or additions to make? Seeing none, all in...
No, we have it on.
Yeah.
All in favor of the minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Presentation, disposal, claims?
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications?
There are none.
Reports of city offices?
Clerk's office, October. Water Works Department, October. Fleet Maintenance Department, October. Water Pollution Control Department, October.
Thank you. And as a reminder, those reports are on file with the city clerk's office and are available for review during the regular business hours. There are no ordinances to consider for second reading, so we will move forward with ordinances for first reading. The first ordinance up this evening is ordinance 2014-35.
An ordinance amending section 8.01.300 of the Lafayette Municipal Code, removal of snow and ice from sidewalks.
With the pleasure of the council, Mr. Downing?
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2014-35.
Mr. Brown?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and considered to con... Or moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-35. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of council, Mr. President, as we've discussed in caucuses, as a slight modification to the current snow removal ordinance as pertains to removing snow from your sidewalk, the ordinance in its former form basically said that you had six hours once the snow stopped falling, regardless of time of day, daylight, or anything like that. So we took a look at that and we tried to make that better, decide is that really fair? Does that give our citizens enough time? Is that reasonable? Does it afford senior citizens? Somebody might have to hire somebody to have it done, to get them over there, or a family member. So we came up with a formula here that says that you have 12 hours of daylight. So depending on when the snow stopped, when it get dark, you would have 12 hours of daylight to get your walk shoveled. And we've thought that through and we think that's very fair. We think that's reasonable. We think that'll give people an opportunity to do it. And we also think from an enforcement standpoint, for us, we're going to feel much more comfortable sending those notices, or unfortunately, we would have to issue citations, because we do want people to shovel their walks. We need them to shovel their walks, particularly around the schools. We'd feel much more comfortable doing that, knowing that we've given what we believe is adequate time and adequate time during daylight hours. And so we would ask your approval to make that small modification. We think it'd be very well received. And if you do so approve that, I would ask that you suspend the rules, so we could vote on that twice, so that could go into effect and we could start getting the word out to the citizens.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have some snow between now and the first of the year.
I hope not. I'm hoping for a very mild winter. I'm hoping it's not really necessary, but should it be, then we'd have it in place.
Any other questions of the mayor on this ordinance? Thank you. Any questions or comments from council before I open up for public comment? Any members of the audience or in the public wish to comment on this ordinance regarding the snow removal 2014-35?
Lloyd Wells, 3717 Rawlings Drive. I just have one question for it. If a person is out of town on vacation, how is that going to be addressed?
How have we done that in the past? Have we confronted that?
We do send notices and then sometimes we have sent it, and if we found out they've been out of town, we just void it, so we try to work with people if they are, to show that they were actually out of town.
You try to make arrangements for neighbors to take care of neighbors, but it doesn't always work.
We understand.
Okay.
Thank you, Lloyd. Any other comments from members of the audience before we take a vote? All right, we'll have a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed on first reading. Mr. Campbell?
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended for consideration of ordinance 2014 on second and final reading.
Mr. Reynolds?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to consider the ordinance for second reading. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Any comments from the audience on the motion to suspend?
You're the only person that votes against suspending the rule. That is true.
For the record, I do that on budgetary issues. All right. Seeing no discussion, I think we'll just have a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The rules are suspended. Now we will consider the ordinance for second reading. Want to read the ordinance one more time?
Sure. Ordinance 2014-35. An ordinance amending sections 8.01.300 of the Lafayette Municipal Code, removal of snow and ice from the sidewalks.
With the pleasure of the council, Mr. Clinker?
I move here ordinance 2014-35 on second reading.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider the ordinance for second and final reading. Any further comments by council?
I would like to thank the mayor and the city for taking this under advisement. I used to work with a lot of folks that had 12 on, 12 off shifts, and this will help them quite a bit. So thank you for considering it.
Any other comments from members of the audience on this ordinance for second and final reading? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six to zero.
All right. The ordinance is passed on second and final reading. Moving on to the next ordinance, 2014-36.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to Pecanou County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from PDMX, PDRS, PDCC, CB, GB, NB, NBU, R3, R3U, and R2U. PDMX, PDRS, PDCC, CB, NBU, R3U, R2U, R1U, and R1 Centennial Neighborhoods.
How does she do that?
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. President. I move for passage, first and final reading of ordinance 2014-36.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-36. Mr. Carson?
After all that, we have to pass it. Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director for the city of Lafayette. Just want to make a few brief comments before I introduce Ryan O'Gara from the Area Plan Commission. This rezoning you have tonight for Centennial Neighborhood is really the result of over 20 years of work of the Centennial Neighborhood. The residents and the property owners and the other stakeholders in the neighborhood have worked tirelessly over the years to improve their neighborhood. And most recently, they created a master plan that was adopted by this council a couple of years ago and was funded by the Lafayette Redevelopment Commission and City Bus. So with that, I want to turn it over to Ryan O'Gara. He'll tell you more about the process and the project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan O'Gara, Assistant Director, APC. Yeah, after about, by my count, at least two dozen public meetings over the process of the neighborhood plan, and then for all of this year, the rezone effort, we really have garnered a lot of constructive comments that, you know, you guys established the vision in adopting the land use plan, and so this is the first of two rezoned installments to try to bring the Centennial Neighborhood into full conformity with the land use plan. This first step, which is propose zoning map eight, you can see how far we've been with the public, this one captures the best we can do, given the existing zoning districts available to us. And the second step, which will follow if this is adopted, is to bring and innovate a form of zoning called Form-Based Code to the community. And Centennial was designed to sort of be the guinea pig. And there's a chapter in the neighborhood plan that specifically talks about urban forms, and so we're going to be drawing from that document again to serve that second step. So we'll be back with you probably in six months or so with the draft of this new type of zoning that we feel is a perfect fit for Centennial. So we're looking forward to getting started.
Just for my reference, what is Form-Based Code?
Form-based zoning de-emphasizes the uses allowed on a property in favor of the actual form of structures going on the property. And so in the neighborhood plan, for instance, there's a lot of references to buildings should be up close to the street, they should be... And conventional zoning does not do that. Conventional zoning just says it has to be 35 feet away. Doesn't say that the front door needs to be facing the street, for instance. Form-based code actually goes into how a building will actually look, and to a lesser extent, is concerned about what goes inside of the building. And so there's a lot of give and take you can do with these codes to make them more restrictive, less restrictive. Presently, only the city of Fishers has a Form-Based Code in Indiana. They just adopted it earlier this year. We may draw a little bit from their experience, but it's not totally applicable, so we'll likely be creating our own. I do have some experience with it from my work in the Washington DC area prior to coming to APC, so I'll be drawing from that experience as well. But really, the neighborhood plan is our guide for making this code work and having the Centennial look established in the community.
Thank you. Any questions of council?
Will this be adaptable to other communities, or is it just unique to the Centennial Neighborhood because of the age of the neighborhood or something like that?
Yes. The... Well, both this zoning effort and then the second step is just bounded to the Centennial borders, which is, you know, Union, Ninth Ferry, and the river. So... But what we do here, if it's successful, and if the community embraces it, and the development community especially, then this, what we've learned could be exploited to other neighborhoods as well. You know, there have been cities across the country that have adopted citywide Form-Based zoning. That's pretty dramatic, and so I think that starting on a smaller scale here is more appropriate. The city of Cincinnati, Ohio, for instance, they've targeted several different neighborhoods within the city for Form-Based zoning. Others have just conventional zoning. And so they're sort of doing it piecemeal as the neighborhood needs dictate. So... But really, it's a way to sort of turn by right zoning loose by having a very prescriptive code that if a developer says, "I can live within these parameters," he can essentially pull building permits and get started. So you're sort of doing a pre-planned development. This is a way I kind of look at it. You're giving them certain design parameters he has to live within, and if he can live with that, well, then there's no public hearing, there's no BZA, he can just pull permits, build to the code, and he's off to the races. So it does save money, it does allow other developers to get into the game that may not normally have been able to in the past, and so there's a lot of advantages.
Centennial is a very active neighborhood, but you mentioned 20 years. Is that true?
Yes, well, I believe the...
Neighborhood at once, too.
I believe the effort started with the NuSo, when that was the last time Centennial was rezoned. And it wasn't done in an intensive way. There wasn't a community outreach like there was this time. It was more to sort of bring, you know, old zoning districts into conformity with the new ones. But there was an effort back then, I believe, to establish a historic district and those sorts of things, and that movement's never died. But... So I would say that, yeah, this saga has began kind of with NuSo. That neighborhood rezone was incomplete, didn't leave the residents a very good taste in their mouth. There was some development that came in they didn't like, and so, you know, they again came back to the city and we all adopted that resolution that got this process started. So this rezoning effort really is fulfilling one of the major, you know, sort of policy objectives of the neighborhood plan, which was to do a neighborhood rezone that brings that, brings Centennial into conformity with the plan, so...
Any other questions, Mr. O'Gara?
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything more? Okay. Any questions or comments from council members? Comments from members of the audience on this particular ordinance regarding Centennial Neighborhood Rezone? Yes?
Hello. My name is Stuart Freskes. I live at 421 Brown Street. I've been living in the neighborhood for 22 years. I was involved in the, this, formulating this document, the neighborhood planning document, and I can see the new development from my window. I was very happy when they originally built the row houses on Fifth Street, and I was happy when they took down Midwest Rentals and, you know, in preparation for, you know, building more row houses. And I'm happy to see that, that they're going to build this next set of row houses. And I think that this, you know, change helps to protect the interests of the people who are, you know, doing things in the neighborhood, and I'm fully in support of this change that you're considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Any other comments?
Hello. Oliver Beers with Windt Corporation, NEI Data Line, and Farber Hotel. We are at 427 North Sixth Street, and we are fully in support of the rezoning. We're actually going to be zoned to an MBU status, which fits us very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Bray, 511 North Seventh. I've lived in the neighborhood for the last eight of those 20 years, and along with my neighborhood colleagues, I've spent countless hours looking at this. Fully in support of this. I think this is what the neighborhood needs. I think from a bigger point of view, it's what the city of Lafayette needs. If we're committed to downtown, we're committed to the riverfront development, this is the neighborhood that intersects that, and the stronger that Centennial is, the stronger the community is as a whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Elizabeth Mark. I live at 657 North Seventh Street. I also restored 653 North Seventh Street, and I live in the block where the suggested rezoning is R1 U, which is single-family homes, and it's a lot of single-family homes in that area, and I strongly support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Liz Maleski. We bought the old Loeb House from Nice Dick Nagel, who fixed it all up, and we're very glad to let it stay our too, even though we intend to keep it as a single-family home, but we're very much in support of the rezoning as it stands, or as it's proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt? I knew we'd hear from you.
How about that? Those are neighbors. I'm Michael Hunt, and my wife and I, Phyllis, live at 602 North Fifth Street in historic Centennial Neighborhood. And if you will allow me, I'm going to get, I'm going to talk about some history pertaining to zoning. Phyllis and I were involved, as Ron Campbell, as Steve Myers, were involved in the rezoning of the neighborhood under NuSo that has previously been mentioned, and that was done in 1999. And you all have received a copy, or you received a report from Dennis Carson, a very nice report, about the consequences of rezoning in Centennial. And I would just like to elaborate a little bit. As I indicated, Phyllis and I were involved, we're kind of a dying breed. We were involved in the rezoning early on under NuSo. And the attempt there was to create the situation that would encourage owner occupancy, residential We didn't create a city plan, and that was a misnomer as far as Dennis was concerned. We created a zoning plan, but we never had a land use plan, but in fact, in fact, though, the zoning plan was our land use plan. And I think you would agree that it's worked pretty well over this now decade. A lot of changes have been made, and it's totally due to the 1999 rezo, rezone. And I would like to acknowledge that one Joe Bumblebird, who was hired by Lua, and that's in your report from Dennis, we were able to create a situation where he was hired to work with us in designing that zoning plan. It was a struggle. There's lots of arrows in the back, but it happened and it worked. And I want to acknowledge publicly Joe's efforts, because he was, he worked on a contract under Lua, yes, but he has been our de facto attorney for the Neighborhood Association and for the Centennial Neighborhood Investment Group, LLC, in the interim, whatever it is, 15 years. And I would have, and I'd also like to thank his compatriots at Ball Eggleston, because I would assume they have questioned his involvement. I understand this thing about chargeable hours, believe me. But he has worked with us. Ball Eggleston has worked with us, and we appreciate it. And here we are. Where are we? As I stand here at 5:55 this evening, I was trying to put together some notes which didn't work worth a dang, as you can tell. I was sitting in front of the computer in my office upstairs, across the street from the old Midwest Rentals site, and at 5:55, I heard the last cement truck leave the site. The foundations for the townhomes, Centennial Townhomes, are in place for the first phase of construction. I don't think I really need to say anything more. Dennis has put in the details, but that's where we are. 21 years ago, that was my wife and I's vision, sitting down there on a corner of Fifth and Centennial with no neighbors, essentially no neighbors. And now we got wonderful neighbors, the townhomes, the row houses, and soon to be the townhomes. And the people living up on North Street, and as was just indicated, the folks living in the Loeb House Inn, and the folks living in the Kellogg Atlas Townhomes, and the fellows, all of these were accomplishments of this neighborhood. It started with rezoning in 1999, and what you all have before you is, whatever you want to call it, an enhancement, an improvement on them. So I encourage your passage of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work. Any other comments from anyone else?
Call for a question.
All right. Questions in called, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution 2014-21.
A resolution for the common council of the city of Lafayette and Indiana authorizing the participation of said city in the motor fuel budgeting program of the Indiana Bond Bank for its 2015 budget year, the execution of the qualified entity reimbursement agreement in connection therewith and other related matters.
With pleasure of the council.
I move for passage of resolution 2014-21 on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Brown?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider resolution 2014-21. Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, Mike Jones, control members of council. As I have done in the past several years, I'm again here asking for your approval to participate in the Indiana Bond Bank Fuel Hedge Program. As you're well aware, this program, the purpose of this program is to give us, the city, budget protection for the fuel expense lines. It is a financial instrument, much like an insurance policy. We still negotiate and bid our own fuel and purchase from the folks that we care to purchase from. And the methodology of the instrument has not changed since the inception of the program. It allows the city to place between 50 and 80 percent of its estimated fuel usage for the next year into a pool with other smaller governmental units, and then the bond bank, together with a commodity consultant, determines a maximum, any minimum price level, called a collar. They base these prices then on the NYMEX, the New York Mercantile Exchange, fuel price. If the price on the NYMEX exchange goes above the maximum, the city receives the difference. If it goes below, then we pay the bond bank the difference. But in any event, the budget remains untouched because of the fluctuation that's involved The bond bank also charges a small administration fee. Last year, it was 3.25 cents per gallon. The first year, it was 6.5 cents, and obviously, this indicates that a lot more entities have joined this program, driving the cost down. And the estimate from the bond bank is that the administration fee will go below 3 cents next year. I don't know if you have any other questions, or if you're glad to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Jones? This is something we've done for several years.
Several years now, yeah, but...
And saved us money.
Yes, it has.
All right.
Only one question. Where'd you get that tie? It's off the chain. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from council? Comments from members of the audience on this resolution? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes six to zero.
The resolution is approved. Resolution 2014-22.
A resolution regarding the established under Lafayette Heartland Economic Development Area.
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. President, I move for passage of resolution 2014-22 on first and final reading.
Mr. Clinker?
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded to consider resolution 2014-22. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, as a council, I believe this is our last step in a long process that we followed in conjunction with Tepicano County. As you know, in the spirit of cooperation, we're creating this area together. We have had the fortunate to have many successes in economic development here in our community over the last several years, and now we are looking for opportunities to have some developable land, particularly along rail. And so we're creating this joint area with Tepicano County, as we have some other areas in the community that'll raise money to put in infrastructure. One thing that's critically important, we have a great road in the Hoosier Heartland corridor, but we need to get water, sewer, stormwater, other infrastructure needs that will allow us to have the capacity to open up some of that land to development that we hope will create jobs and improve the tax base in our community. And so we went through the process of doing all that over a period of several months now, and it's before the council for the final vote. It's been through all the county process, and once that's done, we will begin to move forward. That's Service Area 21 for the city in that area, and we do have some of the utilities planned, and as you know, we do own several acres of ground there at the old Eric's Airport site where the water well field would go in. So we appreciate your approval on that, and we hope for, quite frankly, for doing this for future generations, this will prove to be a very good economic development opportunity for years to come.
Thank you. Any questions of the mayor? Any comments from members of the audience on resolution 2014-22? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes six to zero.
The resolution is approved. The resolution is approved. Resolution 2014-23.
A resolution of the city of Lafayette, Indiana, approving the order of Tippecanoe Area Plan Commission, approving the 2014 amended declaration, declaratory resolution of the 2014 Consolidated Plan for the Consolidated Crease Central Development Area, adopted and approved by the Lafayette Redevelopment Commission.
Pleasure to counsel, Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve Resolution 2014-23.
Ms. Reese Williamson?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of council, that's a very long way of saying and a very lengthy process, that we're just extending the boundaries slightly of the Crease Consolidated Fifth District to take in the area around Home Hospital and Market Square. As you know, with some of the changes at Home Hosp-, or, I'm sorry, St. Elizabeth Hospital over the last several years, and the closing of the emergency room, there'll be some redevelopment that will need to take place in that area, and we certainly want to be in position to help facilitate that, that development, and we want to hope to be able to do some good things there. Also, Market Square, we need to make some improvements along Green Bush Street, in front of Market Square, between the payless there with some, a traffic signal and some entrances and sidewalks, and a better setup for the buses, and so we know that we have some needs, and then out along 26. So this merely extends the boundaries a little bit, which we hope will give us the financial capacity to do those projects as they, as they present themselves. As you saw, the, the redevelopment of the old Home Hospital side, I don't know if you've been up there lately, but it's beautiful and it's officially complete, and they're going to be opening here soon, and creating jobs, taking people in, and there's also some single-family homes that are being developed off of Ferry Street over there also. So we're very pleased with that, and we hope to be a, a partner somehow in working to ensure that the redevelopment of the St. Elizabeth Site also goes as well for the community.
Since we're just passing this, does this affect the development that's occurred already there? Are we capturing any of the, the, there?
The, I, I think part of the expansion already occurred when they consolidated those-
Yes, that already took in the Home Hospital side, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we're already captured, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Questions from, or comments from council? Comments from members of the audience on this resolution regarding the Fifth? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Resolution passes six to zero.
The resolution is approved. Reports to standing committees, I don't believe we have any outstanding reports. Reports to special committees, none. Report by the mayor?
He's thinking. Yeah, we can, we can do this, we'll do this now. Okay, we're gonna do this now. Okay. As, as all of you know, tonight is Steve's last meeting. He was very fortunate, I don't know if that sounds right, he was a very good candidate, so, you know, he had a superior pro too, and we're certainly all thrilled about that, but also this is his last, his last meeting as a city council member, as you know, he's been a council member now for 22 years, and I feel a little bit funny about this, because he just reiterated Saturday night, he didn't want any hoopla or anything, and Cindy and I were like, you know, it's a little late for that, but, so, we, we want to, we want to respect that just a little bit. But over the last 22 years, Steve has played a major role in the development of this community through his work on the city councils, through his work through the Lafayette Urban Enterprise Association, his work on the Historic Preservation Commission, the work in the neighborhoods, and then really most recently, his work with Lua and also with Matchbox, and we want to thank him for that. That took a lot of vision and creativity to make that a reality, but that's what he's provided to this council and to this community over the last several years, really decades, and his work with Greater Lafayette Commerce Service on the board there, and, and the list could go on and on. So we really do want to thank you, and if you'd step down here, I, I do have a special presentation for you. But I kept it short and dignified, right? But Steve, we really do want to recognize you with something special, because what you've meant to all of us personally, to this council, and, and to the city of Lafayette. So it's my great honor to bestow upon you the highest honor that I can bestow upon a citizen of Lafayette, the Marquis de Lafayette, and we'd like to present this to you, and it reads, "Know all by these presents, whereas the city of Lafayette is named for that dedicated son of liberty, and whereas it is the custom of the city to honor individuals who demonstrate such dedication in Lafayette's behalf, and whereas such an individual, Stephen P. Meyer, is distinguished as one who lives a salutary example of humanity, loyalty, inspiration, and wise counsel. Now therefore recognizing such selfless labors and vast achievements, I do hereby bestow the title of Marquis de Lafayette, witness my hand the seal of Lafayette, Indiana, this the first day of December in the year of our Lord 2014." So, thank you for all you've done.
No, I felt a little thankful for him, too.
Looks like you gotta go back down.
Yeah.
She's not done it, young man.
I, I can't top that. Anyway, but on behalf of the council and, and all the employees of the city of Lafayette, and the citizens too, we have just a little something that you can put in your chambers. It doesn't take up a lot of room, and I wasn't as formal as the mayor, and I just put Steve Meyer, I didn't put Stephen, so, but we certainly are gonna miss you, and I, you know, I wish you all, as always, you know.
Thank you.
I did tell the mayor and Cindy I didn't want a big production here, but I, I really do appreciate the sentiment and appreciate the effort. I guess what I would say is that I've really enjoyed my 23 years of serving the city of Lafayette, and I appreciate the good citizens of Lafayette giving me that opportunity. I remember when my mom was Secretary of Mayor, really, and we used to come by the office sometimes after school, and I always looked in the mayor's office and thought, "It'd be really neat to work here someday, in some capacity." So I never really dreamed the fact that I'd have the opportunity to be a part of the growth and the development of this city for as many years as, as the good citizens have given me. So I just have learned a lot, I've worked with three mayors, and a lot of city council members, great department heads, great city employees, and you've all shown a dedication, devotion to this city and to this community. I can say I'm very proud to serve with each and every one of you, and I'll miss the first Monday of every month, being here. But I, I just, I really enjoyed the opportunity, and I'm honored, and I'm very proud to have these, and I'll hang those in my new chambers. Thank you, thank you very much, it's much appreciated.
You can still come see us, you just can't vote.
Not necessarily, you're a citizen.
All right, moving on to the business part of the meeting then. Miscellaneous to new business, any other matters? Reports of councilmen, any councilmen have anything to say? Public comment, this is our opportunity for members of the audience to come and present any issues or comments to us. We do remind you that we ask that you keep your comments restricted to three minutes, so that other members can, or other people can address the, the body as well. Anyone like to come forward? Mr. Barbie?
Perry Barbie, 3700 Redbud Avenue. Oh, I, the, the, no, yeah, you all passed the surveying about the shovel and sidewalks, I think it's gonna help our elderly, uh, that can't get those in a timely manner, I think that's really gonna help them out, out a lot with this, I think we was, at least we did it a long time ago. I hope people, uh, take the time to do more shoveling, bugging neighborhoods, those children and the elderly that can't get to. Second on my agenda tonight, I want to encourage everybody that can hear my voice to get out to the, uh, downtown this weekend for the Christmas晚会, Dickens, and the Indians oldest and largest Christmas Day parade, it'll be downtown at 2:00 PM this Sunday. And Mr. Myers, it's been a pleasure that you've been on this council for all those years, uh, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Perry.
And everybody have a Merry Christmas.
You too. Thank you.
Same to you.
Lloyd West, 3717 Rollings Drive. Most of you in the legal field know how important it is to punctuate things correctly, because it can change the entire meaning of a document if it's not punctuated correctly. I don't know if you realize it or not, but we misread a document, misquoted a document every one of our meetings, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but there is no comma after one nation, as we've read the Pledge of Allegiance. It's one nation under God, not one nation under God. And this is a group of people that is outstanding, and they're good citizens. I'd like to see us do that right, if it's okay. And I hope I never see you again, Mr. Myers.
Lloyd West knocking on bunch of doors his last campaign, I was hearing that a lot. Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Campbell?
I move adjourned, and wish everyone a happy holidays, Hanukkah, Christmas, New Year's, cover them all.
Mr. Clinker?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Opposed.
Opposed. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Campbell?